Substitute city clerk, temporary city clerk? Were we, what, acting city clerk?
Deputy city clerk.
Deputy city clerk, okay. Now that we got that figured out, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
It is Commissioner Finkhauser's turn to do the pledge and the invocation.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Power heads, dear heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us today during our meeting. We ask that you bless those in attendance. Be with our first responders, not only in our community, but all over America. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Amen. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? None being, it will stand as approved. Public comment, this is a time in the meeting that we allow people to come forward on bringing us anything that has nothing on the agenda. We give you five minutes, please come forward and state your name. Welcome.
Everyone, it's afternoon.
Afternoon.
Commissioners?
There you go.
I may hear you online.
My name is Pedro Rodriguez for you, if you don't know me. I am running for House Representative District 123. I graduated from City Community College. I have an associate degree in science. I worked as a deputy sheriff and a city councilman for seven years in Iowa. I'm running for House Representative because education, founding, funding rather, teacher retention, initiative, medical expansion are important to me along with the term limits and quality healthcare for our veterans. I support the need for University of Garden City. Lizette Cruz, my campaign manager, did a survey and she let go over the results with you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lizette Cruz, I'm going to pass out. So I'm a registered nurse, I do ER and I do some agency on the side travel. And so one of the reasons why I did a survey was to find out what people think, do people think we believe if we need a university? So that was my main objective, along with seeing, well, do you believe we need a university? What type of university would it be? So the method I used, I used Google Forms and I used, I set it up so that way there can only be one response per email, so that way we couldn't have one person answer 20 times. Survey questions were done by me, really simple, and it was shared through Facebook through four personal profiles and multiple groups. That included Garden City Chat, Dodge City Chat, and multiple others. And it was shared a total of 24 times. So if you go to the next page, slide number three, do you believe Garden City, Western Kansas would benefit from its own university? There was four responders, responses. This survey was done from September 10 to September 28. And if you look down there in the bottom, 44 responses said yes, three said maybe, seven said no. If you go to the next slide, how, how would a university benefit Western Kansas, Garden City? It would allow me and my family to stay in the community, it would bring more visitors, students to the community, and investment in the university would be investment in the community, economic growth, and none. You can review the results there. The next line, well, what type of university would it be? Business, the second one is STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Agriculture, education, nursing, no need. And the bottom ones are, people would be able to write in what they wanted. One said legal, the other one said, consider a joint campus with Garden City Community College. And this was a multiple choice question, but somebody said, well, most universities have more than one degree. That person obviously didn't know, and I didn't state it above in the question, you can click more than one, but it's okay. And the next question is, well, where would it be located? And so you got there your pie, and so the most answered question, well, more respondents was north of the high school, north of the bypass. And so Garden City is in a location where you have Highway 83 and Highway 50. You know, we have, we can cover Leota, Spear, Syracuse, Deerfield Lake, and Ulysses, Hugaton. I, I travel quite a bit for my job, so I, I know these rural communities. And so I thought, well, maybe somebody will think about building it between Holcomb and Garden City, so that way Holcomb can thrive. And so you can see the results there. And I also chaired it, chaired this survey in Dodge City. And so some people are like, well, build it in Dodge City, which is normal for them. Another question is, do you think, well, I'm a football fan, would you like a large football stadium? And so about 48% said yes, 11 responses said maybe, 17 said no. And the rest of the questions were more just to get a background, who is answering these questions? 34 were female, 19 were male. And if you notice that the response there is at 53. Through Google Forms you can put, it's a required question, and I had missed that. So that's why that answer is not 54 respondents. And just again, I want to look on the next few slides, you know, what, what age are you? Do you have children? And if you can look, our median age in Garden City is about 31, and you can look there, from 18 to 32, that's most of that pie chart there. Along with how many children do you have? Over 50% are children under five, I believe. That's on your slide 11. And I also wanted to know, where do you live? That's on slide 12. Garden City, of course, got 61%. And I added the three pie charts because, you know, it covered Mead, Mineola, Monizuma, Syracuse, and other little cities, towns there. And my last survey question, what's your race and ethnicity? And I thought this was interesting because it reflects what Garden City is. Hispanics, you know, about 50, 48% with Caucasians. And so that's the response there. And my last survey, well, the quote I have there at the bottom, is that nobody mentioned, should we have a Christian university? I'm going through a Christian university right now for my bachelor's, and to me, that's important to say, hey, you know, let's invest in our Christianity and what we believe in, so that way our youth can grow from that also. And that is it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address the commission? Okay, let's go to item number six then.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to, to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim September 24, 2018 as Steve Kotrell Day. This was presented to Steve at his retirement ceremony. Staff recommends your approval, or a volunteer to go get this from Steve's house.
I move that we approve. September 24th as Steve Kotrell.
It's been moved and seconded, and if there's any other discussion, none being, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That passed.
Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Valerie Smith, High Plains Public Radio, under Code Section 6-133, to allow possession and consumption of cereal malt beverages or alcoholic liquors at High Plains Public Radio, 210 North 7th Street, on Friday, October 26, 2018. Just so everybody's aware, this building is owned by the City of Garden City. It's leased to High Plains Public Radio, which requires your consideration.
I move that we approve the request.
There's been a motion.
I'll second.
Been a second by Commissioner Dale. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passes.
Item 6C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Vicky Harshberger on behalf of Mosaic, to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of October 2018 as National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month in Garden City. And I believe that Vicky's here. Vicky, do you have a presentation or someone to present?
Just really quickly, at Mosaic, we really do strive to have each person have their meaningful day, and a person of disabilities is no different. They thrive at being employed and to be of use and to have that fulfillment as well. And so we thank the commission for considering the proclamation of being aware of those with disabilities can be very valuable employees. And today, we brought Dustin. And Dustin, where are you working?
I work at Southwind and Mosaic.
Yeah, he works at both Southwind and Mosaic and does a wonderful job. We are honored to have Tom Marchant, which is our job coach, with us today as well. He has worked diligently with businesses of Garden City to carve out employment opportunities for those we serve, and we are, now have over 20 people that are engaged in community work and volunteerism. And as well as Shannon Gooden, who is our interim executive director, is here today as well to help accept the proclamation. So again, we thank you for your support, we thank you for supporting the work that we do for those with intellectual disabilities at Mosaic. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve that proclamation?
I move that we approve that proclamation.
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. I'll sign it, and I'll be right down to read the proclamation. Come up here and, I'll turn the mic around. All right, I learned last time. You guys can stand around or stand beside me. The, yeah, don't be shy. The proclamation reads, whereas the month of October 2018 has been designated as National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month, in order to celebrate and recognize individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities who make important contributions in their workplace. And whereas, employment is vital to the independence, empowerment, and quality of life of Americans with disabilities. And whereas, the landmark Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 removed the barriers and enabled many individuals with disabilities to find more opportunities to use their gifts and talents in the workplace. And whereas, the United States Congress by joint resolution approved August 11, 1945, has been designated October of each year as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, to recognize the contributions of Americans with disabilities, and to encourage all citizens to help ensure their full inclusion into the workforce. And whereas, the goals of the city properly give recognition to those who directly help people with disabilities gain full access to training and employment, which helps create productive and satisfying lives, and to live as independently as possible. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in the City of Garden City, Kansas, and call upon all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Garden City to seek information from those organizations with expertise in matters concerning employment for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Signed and sealed the second day of October 2018, Roy Cessna, Mayor. Item 7A, Assistant City Manager Cunningham will provide an overview of the big pool for the 2018 season. I'll, I'll take care of it on this. Maybe not, but good enough.
Hopefully we can, okay. So, the big pool, the season's over. I'm here to provide you kind of an update, I guess, sort of a comparison of 2017, 2018, as this has been what I like to call an experiment of some sorts. And so just here to give you the information and let you kind of digest it, and then talk a little bit about now what and what your expectations are moving forward from today. So, we'll start with 2018. In 2018, we hired two managers. We hired a poolside manager who essentially hired and over, was over all of the lifeguards. And then we had another manager who was essentially over gate attendants, slide attendants, concession stand, and that person was also 100% responsible for cleaning the facilities, the, the bottom of the pool and, and the areas around the pool and the bathrooms and that sort of thing. We had 50 lifeguards, which was a significant increase over last year, and we had 15 concession gate and slide attendants. The pool manager certified 10 new guards at the beginning of the season, who were added to our roster, who had never lifeguarded before, and they did a great job. You will see at the bottom of this, the cost of labor increased significantly. And you're probably asking yourself, so why? What was the reason, reason behind that big jump? And there's a couple of things. The first thing is that in 2017, we contracted with our pool manager, Ellie Kennedy. We paid her $11,000 to work from April through October, and that was just, that was all of the work that she did during that period of time. This summer, we actually hired her on as a city employee, and by doing that, found out fairly quickly that she was working a lot of hours. About, into two or three pay periods into the season, I had to have her lay off several days every week, just to keep her overtime at a minimum. In addition to that, our other manager, who cleaned the facility, spent three or four hours every morning cleaning the facility, and then also worked the concession stand in the afternoons. So her hours were significant as well. And then we had several other guards that had, you know, the minimum two hours of overtime or whatever it worked out to be for a pay period. And so that really played into the number of, the amount of money that we spent on labor. I don't think that it was poorly spent, or that there was another way that we could have gotten around this. This is what it took to run the pool. We just, the number of bodies with the number of hours that were open, and the things that need to be done to keep it clean, cost us a lot more money than I expected. So this is what it looked like in 2017, just for your comparison, you'll see, we contracted with one pool manager, we had 30, 30 lifeguards and eight in the concession slide and, and attendants. We only certified five new guards that year, and you can see that our cost of labor was only 121,000 that year. So this is the admissions and concessions for 2018. You can see that we averaged 330 swimmers a day, and as you'll see on the next slide, that's not much of an increase over last year. Pretty stable, pretty consistent. And you'll see that concession, we, we averaged about $460 in sales a day. We were open eight more days this year than we were last year, which gave us about 1,200 more Patreons for the entire summer. You can compare that to 2017 and see that the numbers are very similar. Although we made a little more in concession over the course of the summer, it doesn't result in a, in a big difference. This is a comparison because one of the things that we talked about last summer is how does the weather affect who comes to the pool, or, or what our, our attendance looks like? So you can see, here's a comparison from 2017 to 2018. We had zero days that were closed due to weather in 2018, and seven in 2017. You can see, we had a couple swim meets both seasons. In 2018, one of those was a two day instead of a one day, which is why we have the three. Everything else was pretty similar when you look at it regarding temperature and weather. This is a water usage chart, so you can see the amount of water usage that the pool had for the entire summer. And on the next slide, you're going to see that the 2017 water usage, they're very comparable. We did use less in 2018, but not significantly. We're still losing about 200,000 gallons of water a day, which means we're also pumping in 200,000 gallons of new water every day, at 55 degrees. So you can imagine what that's like in attracting people to come swimming. So, that's just a brief overview. We had a lot go on this summer. We added an ice machine for the lifeguards that we partnered with Livwell, Finney County, on, to aid in, in keeping them cool, which didn't, we didn't actually get completely finished till the end of the summer. We had, overall, we had a good summer with our staff. We didn't have any major problems or any major issues at the pool, which was good. But we're kind of at this place now where I need your direction about where we go and what we do. During the goal-setting retreat, several of you, I think, as I understand, asked me that when this season was over, that we do some kind of community engagement, to start finding out where we go with the big pool, and what the future of that service looks like for the City of Garden City. And so I've had a few discussions since then, Troy and I have discussed that a little bit, and he had some ideas around exactly what the commission meant, and exactly how we go about starting that. So, there's several things that are going to come up. You, as you all are aware, we have a $550,000 project that repaints the, the deep end. That's worth about five years, worth, that, it will last us about five years. We did all of the other areas previously, and we're about a year into that. So we're about four years away from needing to do all of those again. So, we're about three quarters of a million dollars of projects over the next nine years or so. And so from you all, I want to hear and, and get some feedback of, what do you want moving forward with the big pool? Obviously, we'll continue on down the road for the season 2020, or 2019, because that's going to come upon us quickly. But bigger picture and longer term, what is the direction that you want that engagement piece to be with the citizens of Garden City?
Okay, I, my understanding is, this money that you're going to spend over the next five years just to resurface the pool is really not going to save the water.
It will not save any of the water.
So we're still going to have that 205,000 gallons of water a day, that we're going to have to replace at our cost throughout the summer. I realize we probably need to do the resurfacing to even stay afloat long enough to be able to make up an idea of what we're going to do, but I think somewhere down the line, I realize the pool for the people and the community has always been this big pool. And there comes a time when changes have to be made, and I do think that we need to engage the, the citizens of Garden City to see what their ideas would be for that pool.
Okay.
What's? How about the piping? I mean, what are you planning on as far as replacing pipes? I mean, we replaced a lot of them, but...
We have no immediate plan for any of the actual structure of the pool. If something breaks, we'll fix it.
Fix it.
And, and that's what we're doing with everything. I mean, every piece of the pool is essentially a, we repair it as we need to repair it. We, if it, if it's something that needs to be upgraded when it's repaired, we do that. Some of that stuff is a little more difficult, because if you start talking about the structure that's down inside the concrete, under the facility, some of that becomes harder to, to fix or to repair. And a lot of what I'm hearing, in what Melvin said, is that 200,000 gallons a day that we're losing and replacing, is a lot of the reason that the people aren't coming to the pool. And not because they're mad that we're losing water, but because when you replace 200,000 gallons of water every day, the water is 55 degrees. And throughout the summer, no matter how hot it gets, it remains pretty close to 55 degrees. Not a lot of moms and dads want to get in with their three and four-year-olds and swim around in 55-degree weather, or 55-degree water, no matter how hot it is outside. And that's not something with that large amount of water lot being lost, we can change, change very quickly.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Curran, maybe, has this been on the CIP, and I'm just not recalling off the top of my head when we discussed the CIP before, has a, a talk about a new construction recreation pool facility been part of the CIP in the past?
The only thing that on the CIP that we discussed was following the master plan that was set about 10 or 12 years ago. And so really, all of our conversation is, what do we add to the swimming pool? Not if we decide if we're going to build a new one or something like that, it's just strictly keeping up with the master plan.
Well, I mean, I, I, I hope we can incorporate that discussion a little bit more into CIP because it's such a good citizen input process, but it sounds like to me, that's what we're laid out here. It's, it's, do we, do we embark on, as you're saying, you know, within the next five years, a new facility, or not? But it doesn't sound like the, the current facility is really going to be viable much longer, as sad as that makes us.
And some of the, some of the discussions Jennifer and I had through email, this idea of maybe you create a task force, there are people in town who this is really valuable to, and I, I think the CIP process is very valuable, but I mean, maybe this is something with this big, we narrow it. I agree gathering as much information as we can, and Jennifer talked about doing citizen surveys and citizen input, and I think that's valuable. And I, I think some of the most valuable input could come from those people who recently worked at the pool.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm, I'm saying, I think there are people who, it is a landmark, and I appreciate that with Commissioner Dale talking about, it is a landmark. And so how we move forward, it's no different than the Windsor Hotels, no different than the State Theater. But I mean, with these landmarks, how we handle them, and, and how we engage around this kind of a discussion, I think is really important. And that's why I said, you know, maybe a task force would be a little bit smaller group to work with, a little bit more manageable, and I mean, you could open it up, I mean, I don't think it has to be a long-term thing, it could be a short-term. And I think the CIP process is one opportunity to gather information, so.
Yeah, I agree with the, the other commissioners and what you're saying, I just, the only other added comment I want to make on this is we haven't explained how this water's getting out of there, so the people out there in TV land may not understand that the south end of that pool is lower than the north end, so the water is going out the drains around the edge of the pool, is that correct?
I'll let Mike speak to that, I, I don't want to give any wrong answers on the water.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Where is the water?
In part, that's certainly true. There's, there's still, the, the pool has significant leaks in it still. Last year, we dug up, Sam's crew replaced the concrete and did some work in the southeast corner of the deep end of the pool, hoping that that would help. It did help some, but it did alleviate the fact that the water's leaking somewhere. Whether it's through the pipe system underneath, whether it's running down the gutters and going away, we can account for some of that through evaporation and the water that's lost when, when everything is backwashed, but nevertheless, it's still, it's still right around 200,000 gallons a day.
And then Jennifer, you were, and I was going to ask this earlier and I forgot, do you know what it costs per day to run the pool? Or is there, I mean, you don't have to tell it now, I mean, I, I was going to ask earlier and I didn't.
It depends on what you mean by, what does it cost per day to run the pool?
So from the, the start of the season to the end of the season, I mean, even if, even if there's no one there, so is there a per day cost, just to have?
For chemicals, for labor, for...
Just for everything, like for the whole, I'm, I was just, I'm curious.
So if you look at what we spend in chemicals, we spend about $90,000, a little over $90,000 for the entire summer, for chemicals, and that's an expense that's there whether we're open or whether we're closed. The labor, obviously, we don't factor in if we're not open, but that's, so if you just look at those, those basic things, you say we spent 208 on labor for the entire summer, and we spent 90 on chemicals. Those are our basic functions, day to day. There's some other small things in there to open the pool, you know, supplies for the lifeguards or things like that, but generally, those are our expenses. But overall, that's not the expense that matters, the, the real expense, like, the one that we're talking about here, is the one, the capital expense, what it costs to every season just open those doors, because there's things that have to be done to get through. So as for a specific on a day, I don't know, but you can, we're, we're open about 86 days, so you can take that 300,000 or thereabouts and, and divide by 86, and you're going to get a, a rough cost of what it costs us on a day.
And it's, because I, I'm wondering if that includes that loss of water, the replacement of the water?
No.
Yeah, I guess a real, I mean, a firm cost and knowing, I mean, for me, that would be really helpful in thinking about, so how serious is the situation, how quickly do we need to move? So if I knew, I mean, and I'm sorry, I'm not, I was going to...
No, you're fine.
But I'm not going to, I'm not, that would take...
No, you're fine. They can do a calculation, obviously, the, they can tell you what the cost of that water is per gallon probably, and then over the 200,000 gallons, I, I think you're going to find it's going to be a fairly significant cost.
Right. Because I would be interested in the 86 days, what per day, all of the costs rolled in together, what that looks like, and then I, that would give me a better perspective of, you know, so how serious do we need to do? How quickly do we need to move?
I'm, I'm more than happy to, to get that for you, I can probably have that for you at your next meeting. I will tell you that I don't think you're going to decide anything that's going to change the, the 2019 season. However, I do think that the costs and the issues that we're facing are big enough that it is something that you need to be thinking about today, and we need to be coming up with a plan in the, the short future about how do we engage people, and what does this look like, and what's our plan? Because we don't want to be on the other side of being too late and not providing this service at all, so.
Well, it sounds like we've given you some direction on different avenues of kind of tackling this from the commission's standpoint. I know that from all of the commissioners, we understand that something needs to be done because I know the last number of years, you've come to us with some large capital projects to keep. projects to keep this aging landmark viable and running. So I think from, you have some marching orders, it sounds like, that we've kind of given you to kind of get some input from the community, but also maybe come up with an idea of moving forward? And if not, we could probably readdress.
You know, one thing, we have an indoor facility pool out east, and at some point, I wonder if what we spend on that pool a year, we spend out there, let people go to that facility. I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud here, but...
I think there's some...
There's some other options. I mean, I don't think we're ready to spend $5 million on a new, $10 million, I don't know what it would cost, but I don't think we're ready to do that quite yet, so.
I think that's the central question that has to go in the community because it looks like that's what it's going to come down to. It's, do we do this or do we not? And then the secondary question is, how do we do it? But gauging the desire to have a public facility, you know, that is a water, that is a pool, and whether that comes with a community center around it or extra play area or whatever, we've always been, it's been nice to have the big pool located where it is because of the proximity of the zoo and the playgrounds and those things. But I think that's the first question. Maybe, would it help to have like a deadline as to when do we want to have this community input gathered? And when do we want to try and make an assessment on what the answer to that question is, and then a plan? And how far before the start of the 2019 season does that need to be done? Would that be more specific for you? Because I think...
I think you're looking at the 2020 season. Is it 2019 season?
Yeah, I think 19's, you're going to have to go to...
You're probably, yeah, we're probably going to have to roll into 2019. What I would say is that once you open it to me to actually begin work on this engagement, I'm going to need somewhere in the neighborhood of at least 90 days to actually get a full spectrum, to have a survey, to get people in and have conversations with them, and then put that information into a format that you are able to review and kind of decide where we go next. So I guess the first piece of this is, is I think I have some idea of what you're asking and what you're wanting. What I would propose is that at the next commission meeting, I bring you the information that Mr. Unruh has requested, that Commissioner Unruh has requested, and I also bring what I understand to be what you're requesting me to do. And then you guys can give me direction if I'm on the right path, and if so, I'll go ahead and move forward from there. You guys can actually take action on that item. And if not, you can give me further direction on where to go.
Yes, sounds good.
Okay.
Good big call.
Okay, awesome. I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
If you don't have any questions on those, we'll draw your attention to the meetings of note. Item 8, the joint legislative task force will meet next Wednesday. It's at Garden City High School, 10:00 AM. Conferences or attendees are requested to enter from the point, so north parking lot, and then I believe it's in the performing arts room or auditorium. Also, if you haven't RSVP'd yet for the diversity breakfast, we'd encourage you to do so. And also the annual state of the city address, which will be given by Mayor Cesna this year on October 17th at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast. There's a league supper in Dodge City. So all of those things, please RSVP through emailing Jared, and you can copy me if you'd like, and we'll make sure that the right people have your RSVP in time.
Do you know on the gubernatorial debate, does that mean require a ticket? Or do you know, is it just first come seating? Or how's that?
I don't, I don't know.
Is it open to the public?
It's just open to the...
Open to the public, okay.
So, yeah.
So it's open to the public.
Good question. The answer from the back of the room for TV land is it's open to the public. You do not need a ticket. The, there's no other questions on the meetings of note. Item 9A is the appropriations ordinance. If approved, it would be 2468-2018A.
I move that we approve the appropriations ordinance, 2468-2018A.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
So two o'clock public hearing, we'll come back to that. Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the rural housing incentive district for Hampton's addition. If approved, this would be ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution number 2746-2018. Salem.
All right. This is the first step, or technically the second step of the process for establishing an RHID for this project. They are currently moving forward with their Platts for this project and development agreements with it as well. This is the first step by establishing a hearing to review those plans, and the resolution that you have enclosed in your packet outlines their plan that they currently have in place and what their next steps will be. Any questions?
None being, entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I move that we approve resolution number 2746-2018.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Unruh seconded. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the 2019 Southwest Kansas Coalition Legislative Agenda. Jennifer will present this item.
Mayor and commissioners, this is the legislative agenda that you work with Liberal and Dodge and also Hays as a small participant in this group, and you worked on this at the end of August, and it is now coming before each of the commissions for approval. At this point, you have a couple of options. You can approve it as it was included in your packet. You can choose not to approve it, or you can make recommendations for changes. Now, those changes will then need to go before the other two bodies as well in Liberal and Dodge.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the Southwest Kansas Coalition Legislative Agenda.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
The governing body is asked to consider, item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the federal and state additions of the 2019 Garden City Legislative Agenda. Jennifer?
Mayor and commissioners, again, this is the other side of your legislative profiles. This is your state and federal legislative profiles that we worked through at your pre-meeting two meetings ago, or I'm sorry, at your last meeting. We worked through these, and so they are before you today as we came up with them from that meeting. So if something doesn't look right, this is the time, if you have any changes. If not, I would ask that you, staff recommends that you approve them.
I move that we approve the legislative agenda for the state and federal.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Finkhauser made the second. Any other discussion on that item?
I do want to say thank you for adding the information on transportation about adequate bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. That, I really appreciate that. It's a big deal to me.
No problem.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Are you on the next one, too?
I am.
All right.
Three in a row.
I didn't see the governing body is asked to consider and approve a contract between the city and Penninger, Smith &amp; Associates, Inc. for governmental affairs and legislative monitoring services for 2019.
So this is a contract with Penninger, Smith &amp; Associates for representation of Garden City only. They have represented Garden City in this capacity for the past several years, and they've never sought an increase. We've paid the $25,000 a year for their services each of the previous years. And this year, they are asking for a 4.3 increase, percent increase, which is the amount of inflation over those four years added together. So I included that in your memo, and that increase comes out to $1,075 added on to the $25,000. So you have an option, and obviously, the contract was attached for your review. If you have any questions or any changes to that contract, you can make those now, or if you have any comments on the increase, you can also make those now. If not, you can move to approve or move to deny.
I have a question for staff, to both of you, City Manager Allen, Assistant City Manager Cunningham. Straight up, what is your opinion of the working relationship with these lobbyists and the services that they provide? Do you think that we should continue this contract? Obviously, you're recommending this, but I just wanted a little bit of feedback on the performance and what the value for this contract, what you see we get for this.
So on my side of things, and I take a lot of the legislative stuff just because that's something that I enjoy, and it's kind of how I came on to the city manager's office with the tax lids. So I've spent a lot of time with John and Doug, and honestly, the biggest value that you get from a lobbyist is their connection to people and their knowledge of how people respond to things. Just like one of my department heads may come to me and bring an issue and want to know how the commission responds, my job is to understand each of you and how you might take on an issue. Their job is to do the same with the representatives and the senators, and they do that, and they do that very well. The other thing that I really enjoy about them is that any time of day or night, I can be laying in bed at 11 o'clock at night and see that something happened on a particular issue, and I can text either one of them, and within a few minutes, I get a response. So that's very nice. It's very handy to be able to have that information quickly, know what's going on, and then the next day be able to do something with it. So I appreciate those things about them. Obviously, my time working with them has been a little bit shorter than Matt's, so he may have something to add.
The 11 o'clock at night text explains the increase.
Yeah, I was like, boy, that must have been a little late.
Yeah, they're first class. We've appreciated, we've had other council. We retained them just as the city of Garden City for issues that sort of fell outside of Southwest Kansas Coalition. We made the switch to Penninger and Smith at the Southwest Kansas Coalition level after working with someone else initially. And so, you know, we've had a situation where we've had some representation or council that we didn't feel like we were getting our monies worth, and that isn't, that isn't the case with these folks. I would, yeah, I would strongly encourage the commission to approve it and other municipal entities around the state when they've done background on these guys. I've expressed to them that we've been very satisfied, and if it were up to me in their community, I would tell them to hire these folks. Also, they do the Southwest Kansas Coalition, they do us, and they do the, I think it's called LGR, it's the Association of Western Kansas Counties.
KLPG.
KLPG, thank you. The, and so they're really in tune with Western Kansas issues that affect local government, not just at the city level, but the county level.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we approve the contract with Penninger and Smith Associates for $26,075 per year.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the Police Citizens Advisory Board. Chief?
Thank you, Matt. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The advisory board has a vacant position with a term expiring December of 2021. We have two great applicants that applied and submitted applications, both Melissa Savolt and Emlyn Swartz, to be considered for the available board position. Ms. Savolt and Ms. Swartz were both interviewed by myself, along with chairperson Chuck Allen and vice-chairperson Melina Johnson of the advisory board. The applications were subsequently presented and reviewed by the Police Citizens Advisory Board on the regularly scheduled meeting held on September 17th. The board recommends appointing Emlyn Swartz to fill the vacant positions. I can tell you that both applicants were great applicants, but we had one position to fill. The alternatives were to either appoint Emlyn Swartz or appoint Melissa Savolt, or do not appoint anyone to the vacant positions, and recommend the advisory board to continue to solicit applications. The advisory board recommends the governing body choose alternative one, appoint Ms. Swartz to serve on the advisory board.
The commission may remember, but in case you don't, Melissa Savolt was appointed to an advisory board position at the last commission meeting to a different advisory board.
I'll make the motion to appoint Emlyn Swartz to the Police Citizens Advisory Board.
Second.
There's been a second by Commissioner Unruh. Any other discussion on that item?
I just wanted, and I know this is not possible for, because of our commission time meetings and, you know, a lot of people work during the day, but I really would appreciate when people are appointed, I mean, if they can come, and I'd love to, because this might be the only time we get to meet them. And also, I see these advisory committees as a vital part of our community. I mean, they do a huge, they give huge input into what we decide as a commission. And one thing I was thinking about, and this is maybe new business, but I'd love to see if we could do an appreciation lunch or something for these, so that we can actually meet the people who are doing this incredible work, and maybe it's a dinner, so they don't have to. And I also want to make sure we invite them to the October chamber breakfast, but I thought it was excellent.
Time's up, no.
Thank you, Mayor. But I just wanted to say, I would love, for anyone who brings an advisory committee, you know, someone who they're recommending, I would love to get the chance to meet them. Their application, I think they were really well done, but it would be really great to meet them, so.
Sure.
And it's not just for you, but for anyone who brings.
Great idea.
Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thanks, chief.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and authorize, or consider the authorization for the use of special assessments for the 11th Street and for a development at 11th Street and Emerson Street.
All right. You have in your packet the complete staff report regarding this request. This is regards to the Oroco addition, Phase Two, and Harold Oroco is requesting authorization for the use of special assessments to provide infrastructure improvements to the 11th Street and Emerson Street project as included in Exhibit One. The infrastructure improvements will include curb, gutter, water, sewer, and electric services. There are 12 lots in the Oroco addition, Phase Two. The parcels participating in the program are Block Two, Lots 1 through 8, Block Three, Lots 1 through 4, and that's in Exhibit Two. The developer is requesting to provide 100% of the total cost, a special assessment districts is established for 10 years, and/or the special assessment can be paid up front and not divided over the 10 years if the developer chooses to pay those up front. The total amount expected for this project is estimated at 202,500 with contingencies. This amount does not include financing fees. Alternatives are authorize staff to begin the petition process or not to approve the specials process to begin. Staff recommends authorization to begin the petition process. The fiscal note, if the petition process is authorized, the special assessment district will provide 100% of the funding. The city will permanently finance the final cost in a 2019 general obligation bond and will be reimbursed over a 10-year period through special assessments on the properties.
What's the zoning of this?
This is zoned R, I believe, R2 is the zoning district.
So it could be duplexes?
No, single-family.
So according to the drawing, it's a single-family?
Yeah, single-family. He did rezone the properties, the lots that are but Thompson, West Thompson Street, to R3.
Okay, that's the one, yes.
The cul-de-sac that you see itself is also... West Thompson Street, to R3. Those, the cul-de-sac that you see itself is all single family. The lots facing West Thompson Street are duplexes.
So Caleb, I want to make sure I understand this. So when you talk about the special assessment district will provide 100% of the funding, can you help me understand that better?
Yes. Basically, in this instance, the cost, this $200,000 some odd thousand dollars that is going to, cost to put the infrastructure in, will be assessed all of the lots, and all of the lots will pay that full $202,000 reimbursement back. It's not asking for any share to be shared by the city at large.
That's the way, that's the way we used to do it all the time.
That's right.
You just pay specials and...
Yeah, that's what I thought, too, but it just...
The only downside of that is when you go get appraisal, they deduct that, and it makes quite a difference in the appraisal process. If you've got 10 years of specials, and the way we've been doing it, you know, is like RHID and different things, but...
And that's why I was wondering why this, I did call your office this morning, and I was wondering why this wasn't RHID. Is it because they didn't request it, or is it because it's not necessary, or?
Yeah, they're requesting, honestly, this, doing specials is the, the full cost is then, is then paid for by the city upfront costs. RHID, the developer has to come up with all the upfront costs. Specials, those costs are at risk of the governing body putting that in, into the general obligation bond and being reimbursed back over time for that. So therein lies the, whether that is something that the community wants to do or not do when you consider specials.
By statute, is there a limit on how much we can do as far as this financing?
Well, that falls down to what your, your capacity is to have debt and bond the projects.
But it's not particular to a development project. It's just whatever we're willing to take on by statute for the entire geo?
Correct.
And so would this go through our geo bond? Is that how that's going to work?
Yes.
The 2019 geo bond?
Yes.
Of course, we've got some coming off, too, so...
And that would be, as you consider specials, you know, if you get several specials in a row, that's something you want to consider is what's our capacity? Do we want to set apart for that in our, in our funding?
So does this meet the, so I know chat has some levels of different costs, or I don't know if it's square footage or cost on homes. Does this meet one of the chat, one of the goals of the chat document, or the?
Yes. This, as far as the housing, right now, pretty much every category is, is in need of housing. We have a, we kind of have the goal in the chat report that we've set as kind of our, we're going to the puck on that, in a sense. And so, we're, we, we know that not all of these will be built at once. They'll be built and staggered over time. Same, similar with a lot of RHID. So we're trying to watch those as we come in to see, okay, how many are we expecting to build? If he builds three, three a year for the next three or four years, and builds out, then we're taking that into consideration with the chat numbers or that housing market study, because we're in the process of updating that chat report right now. We should have that back by December, or end of December, first part of January, and that'll really tell us where we are with our housing needs because, and what programs we should or shouldn't continue to use, so.
Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize the use of special assessments for the Roscoe addition, Phase Two.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Federal Aviation Administration Supplemental Appropriation Optional Project Request for Consideration of Funds for the Construction of a New Terminal at Garden City Regional Airport.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Disclaimer, I do not come up with those titles. This is actually, so what you're looking at is a request to let the FAA know that, hey, we're interested in some of this additional billion dollars that has became available for airport improvement projects. The request that the city is considering to submit is for $22 million. And looking at that funding amount, if you apply 90%, which is our federal share to that, that brings us just 20 cents shy of 20 million, which is a cap for the funding request that you can have. So for your consideration, the total cost of the construction of the terminal that we reviewed during the pre-meeting workshop on August 2nd, 7th, for the city commission, to look at the terminal area plan, project, and the recommendations to build a new terminal, this is the total estimated cost for construction is 26 million. So if we apply for this funding, the city would ultimately be responsible for roughly around $6.8 million is the 10% share. Now, these numbers can change. This is just the request. The FAA does have the discretion to award $10 million, $20 million, or all the project, which is probably not going to happen, but this is just kind of placeholder numbers. If we are awarded this project, then we will come back to you in roughly May of 2019 with a formal FAA grant application, and then that way, all those numbers will be concrete, and so you'll know what the city's obligation. In between this time, the FAA estimates that they're going to receive a lot of requests for this supplemental funding. So we're looking about at least a six-month period until we hear something back. So at this point, the city is not obligated to fund any of this project. It's just a request to let the FAA know, but also having the, in the back of your mind, that the city might be required to supplement $6 million for this project. It could go up to 8 million. We just don't know at this point. So that's what we're looking at.
I'll make the motion to approve the, the request for the FAA Supplemental Appropriation Optional Project Request for Consideration of Funds for the Construction of a New Terminal at Garden City Regional Airport. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fink has a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I think the only item we have is the 2:00 PM public hearing. We're still a few minutes away. If you'd like to take up the consent agenda and don't have any items which you'd like to remove from that for further discussion, the appropriate motion would be G1 through 16.
Can we ask a question, Matt, without having to remove it out of the consent agenda?
Yeah, depends on how complex the answer is.
Well, I know that it's the, where you talked about the 2018 Metropolitan Energy Center. Is this from the VW grant settlement dollars that they were able to take advantage of?
Why don't we pull that off, and we'll answer that question for you. So if we want to do the consent agenda, it'd be items G1 through 3 and 5 through 16.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items G1 through 3 and 5 through 16.
There's been a motion to approve items G1 through 3 and 5 through 16 on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Dale made the second. Any other discussion on that item? None being. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay.
So item G4 was the governing body's consideration, or is, the governing body's consideration approval of the professional service agreement with Metropolitan Energy Center for the CNG Refuge Collection Vehicle Purchase Grant. Sam?
Good afternoon. The answer to the question on the VW settlement, this isn't part of that.
Okay.
This is a separate grant that we received with a few other communities. VW settlement will go to the school districts first, and after that period is gone, then we'll have an option to apply for that as well, and we'll be looking at applying for some of those funds as well.
How many trucks do you have now that are running on natural gas? Are they just to use that, or?
We have three refuge trucks running right now out of 12.
And this will add a three additional?
This adds four.
One of those has already been purchased, though, right? So this is the second of the four. So we have three in the fleet. One has been purchased with this grant that commits us to purchase four. So there's a little bit, we're at a point in time where there's a little bit of crossover in those numbers.
Yeah, I was trying to figure it out when I was reading through it, so, okay.
So we're getting $22,000 per truck, which is, how much are the trucks total?
Trucks are running about $202,000. There's about a $44,000 difference between the engine for a CNG truck versus a diesel, so it offsets some of those costs for the additional cost for the engine. We also are receiving some incentives from Sparks. They're going to lower their fuel costs for us, and also, I believe, Black Hills also adds. So we're going to get a few more incentives for this first truck.
So I think the overall strategy when the commission committed to this capital obligation and accepting the grants was when our trucks and on the schedule our trucks would come due in our equipment replacement schedule, the next four would be compressed natural gas, and the grant plus the other partners contributing their incentives would erase the engine differential between what it would be. Now, I don't think it's probably completely closed that gap, but it's coming close.
It's closing close.
It's 2:00, so we'll hold off on, on making the vote on that particular item. I will go back to item number...
Eight.
Seven, 10A?
Item 10A.
Okay, 10A.
The public, the 2:00 PM public hearing to consider adoption of the development plan and establishment of the Rural Housing Incentive District for Chapel Heights Third Edition is brought before the city commission. If approved, it would be ordinance number
All right. This is the final step for the Chapel Heights Third Edition RHID, and this will complete their project as, and get them started after the waiting period. So any questions? If not, we'll open it.
How many houses?
Say what?
How many lots? I was just looking it up here.
How many lots in there, Caleb?
37 houses listed.
There was, there was 112 housing units. It doesn't say lots.
That's 37 single families.
Yeah, they're all single-family homes. 37 single-family homes.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
I'll open the, I'll open the public hearing now. Hello.
All right.
It's been kind of a long process, Caleb, trying to get this going. Have you, do you have any questions at all? Are you familiar with the flat?
Yes.
Yes.
These are all R1?
Yes.
No, no apartments?
No, no R3.
How full are you on the Phase 1? What do you have?
In Phase 1, we had R3 and, and some of it, I think, 1 block or something like that.
Yeah, but how many lots do you have left?
Eight.
Eight?
Yep. And then we did the RBC also, which 22 lots, and we have, I think we have six of those left, and they're all spoken for, except for the three that are set up for duplexes. Those are not spoken for. Everything else is spoken for.
So the next phase, it looks like?
Yeah, Phase 2, it's, you know, it's a little hillier area, going to be specialized housing and so on like that. That's going to be slower going, because it's going to be more of a custom type thing. But that's why we're going back into Phase 3 and get into that price range that, that we need and is more suitable at this time.
So will there be another entrance into that subdivision off of Mary Street, or is it just going to be, the Glengyde Drive is still going to be the only drive off of that into the Phase 3?
Well, eventually, we'll have four entrances. We'll have one off of Barker, three off of Mary. But it's all sudden now. That's what, there's actually two more when we do Phase 3. There'll be two more entrances going.
Off of Mary Street.
Yeah. And we, we're going to have to work with Sam on the, on the Jenny Barker part to get a bridge in and so on like that. And then, of course, they're thinking about changing Walmart drainage to go straight across and into DD2. So that's, things we're going to be working with, with Sam on that, because...
Is there, is there any plan to enlarge that DD2? Because I mean, we're...
We, when we developed, we said, we raised, we added 15 foot to the ditch through our property.
Width?
Sort of 75 foot, it's now 90, 90 foot available to DD2.
Okay.
Going through our property.
Because we're putting a lot more water through there. What, I'm thinking about on down, down line, the old country club property.
That's...
Somebody else's problem.
Well, you asked where the problem's at.
Yeah, it's narrowed down there.
It, well, it narrows down, and then it's not, there's not as, quite as much slope.
Right.
It, actually, I think about Shawman going south is kind of, start slowing down.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where we have the problem. T-Bone Estates is where they really seem to have a problem at this time.
Yeah, we're hoping to take care of that.
And I don't know where all the water comes from, but there's not much going through our ditch, but boys, you're running over in T-Bone.
I don't think it's the big pool that far away, but I don't think it's the big pool that far away.
How big? It's half a mile or so. I'm assuming you're talking about the Folds area?
No, the big pool, they talked about losing 200,000 gallons a day, and I just, that was shocking.
Any other questions? You have any other comments for us for this project, or?
You know, there's kind of some rumors going around that there's something coming into town. Is there anything that you can talk about at this time?
This is a public hearing on, on the RHID for, for this project, so.
So you can't say?
Can't say anything during this public hearing, so.
Okay. How about after?
Probably can't say anything afterwards.
Probably not then either, unless Lana wants to.
Which we have.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment at this time? I'll close the public hearing then.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance 2806-2018 and RHID Phase 3 addition to Chapel Heights.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dale made the second. Any other discussion on that item? None being. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Happy building.
Happy building.
Now we're back to item...
G4. And I don't think we've received a motion or a second.
No, we were, had to get to it.
And I think we concluded our answer to the question.
I would, I would say we approve the professional services with CNG grant with the Metropolitan Energy Center and authorize the mayor to sign here.
There's been motion, and Commissioner Dale made the second. Any other discussion on that item? None being. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That passed.
Very good.
Looks like we're on to Commissioner comments.
Correct.
Commissioner Finkhauser.
Thought the pre-meeting was good. We kind of need an update on the court system every once in a while, and I thought they did a good job presenting that. The other thing is, just like to comment on fall cleanup. I think that's one of the best services that we provide, and it seems like every year, people start putting stuff out a little earlier, but I know it costs, costs us some money, but at least people get rid of stuff instead of piling it in the alley. So I really, I think that, and I hear a lot of positive comments about that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Dale?
I thought we had a great meeting today, and I want to thank the commissioners for the positive and motivated conversation. We had reference to the pool. It's going to be a major decision that will come upon us in the near future, and I appreciate the work that the Assistant City Manager is going to do to bring that forth to us, to give us some ideas, because it's something that's, it's, it's there, and we can't ignore it for too much longer. We're going to have to do something. We'll just have to keep our eyes and ears open to the public and be open to many suggestions, and hopefully that the body here can make a good decision that'll take them... them on for another 100 years, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Enruh?
So I'm excited about, there's the annual meeting this weekend of the League of Municipalities, which is the most complicated thing. Looking forward to not only the opportunity to learn more about the important work we do, but also to connect with other commissioners across the state. There's some really exciting, we do have, on Monday, there is a, we're honoring one of our own at a luncheon, and so I think that's going to be exciting, too, and it's like...
Cliff Sonnenberg, yep.
Forty years, yeah, so I think that's, that's going to be really neat, so I'm, I'm excited to be able to be there for that. I also, I'm looking forward to the State of the City address. I think being at the Chamber Breakfast is a really great example of, and letting people know what's going on with the city, and I'm looking forward to Mayor Sessner's report. I'm also excited that the Leadership Garden City will be there in full force, and so I'm supporting that, and also just to see the city in action, to hear what's going on. So Leadership Garden City started up this month, earlier this month, and we have 14 participants, and it's going really well. We, we're, actually, we're hosted by the city this last week, so it's been really exciting. I appreciate all that's going on in the fall, and all of the really neat opportunities we have as a city to come together, so I just want to thank the, the City of Garden City for all the great opportunities I've been able to take, or taken several of them, so, thank you.
Commissioner Burns? It's to you.
To me? I'm excited, I get to attend the league meeting this weekend, too, and I'm, I'm excited about it. It's my first league meeting, and I thank the city for sponsoring me to get to go to that, and I, I want to express the appreciation myself, and I think across the commission, to the municipal court. I really appreciated the way they described the interactions with the folks who come before the court, and the willingness to meet people where they are, and, and make productive, meaningful plans for people to, to help. And so I, I, that really spoke to me, and I thought it was really important, and I was very glad to hear that, and I'm proud of, of the work that they do. That's all.
Just wanted to let you know that I attended the city's Finney County United Way kickoff event this last week. I want to thank the staff that organized the event. It was a great success, as always. The United Way, the United Way's goal is to advance and create a long-lasting change that, that prevents problems from beginning in the first place, and that's really what the United Way funds those organizations in our community to helps, to enhance and advance the causes in our community, so, again, and it, they're, they're in their fundraising campaign right now, so, but again, congratulations to those who organized that event, it was a great event. I, along with Commissioner Finkhauser and Commissioner Burns, were on the tree board tour. It turned out to be a great tour, visited a number of areas, focused on the cemetery this time, had a lot of good information about the cemetery and plans that they're looking at, enhancements that they're doing at the cemetery, so always a fun tour to go on. I agree that, had a lot of good discussion about the pool and kind of the direction we need to, to go. It is, you know, it is one of those items that we need to look at and figure out a way to help sustain that amenity in our, in our community in some fashion or form. I agree, I, there are a lot of events, being mayor, that I will have to attend and do welcomes at for the month of October, the Joint Legislative Transportation Task Force on the 11th, the Diversity Breakfast on the 11th Summit as well, the Annual State Address that I'm starting to work on. There was one other item, we did have a movie maker come in, filmmaker, and they did a film, a documentary, on how Garden City, how we welcome diversity in our community and the cultures into our community, and they're having their premiere event on October 10th at 6:00 at Garden City High School in the auditorium. It's about a 33-minute film, but really focuses on how, how we accept and welcome and how we integrate the different cultures into our community, so, pretty interesting film. So if you have time or don't have anything to do on October 10th, that evening at 6:00, they'll be premiering it at the auditorium in Garden City High School.
For you, Lana?
No, I'm not in it.
Oh.
So, just saying, it highlights our community, something, again, one of those items where people come into our community and kind of poke and prod and listen to what we do, but it really highlights who we are and what we are as a community, so just another thing that gets out there and showcasing and highlighting Garden City. On that note, I have nothing else, so, meeting adjourned.